Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 3rd. It is seven o'clock, so we'll stand in the pledge of allegiance to get the record meeting started. Loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We have a million asylum, we call them military firefighters, work workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here in the Bronx. Thank you. We have a roll call vote, please.
Justin McLaughlin?
President.
Trustee Bass?
Present.
Trustee Vaughn.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is fiscal officer report. Settle your seat on the floor.
Okay, so, um, I request that we discuss the permanent budget next meeting. Because we got a lot of things to discuss. Now, hurry, my budget, final budget is not due, permanent budget is not due to April. But, but we do want to start talking about, so, the next meeting we want to start really to discuss as possible. For the financial report, I appreciate you guys getting the temporary budget, um, done by the end of the year. I got a lot of handles ready to start the year on time finally. Like, it's two years without the delay, which is, and, um, we're starting to pay the bills. Like I told you earlier, there's checks to be signed in the box. So far, we gotta start working on perfect orders. So, we don't have perfect orders to pay the bills. So, we got the budget now, we gotta start working on perfect orders. I got, I'm really busy now because I gotta close out last year and get, by the end of this month, I have to get the quarter to the county, and I have to close the last year's budget out by one March or next February. I have to close out that perfect order program. So, you guys who have access to U A N M C, right now, buttons in there, say twenty-one or twenty-two or twenty-three. If you remember when you took them for twenty, you just gotta click on that button and automatically just close on twenty-two. You're getting any amount on stage, then you're gonna need to click when you log in, you gotta click on the radio button, twenty-three radio button. Anybody got any questions? Other than that, I'm not seeing anything because I know it's just what I'm...
The question from the auditor?
Oh, um, yeah, I forgot about that. The auditor had an amendment, and I'm not exactly sure that it reached it with the additional money before we had one amount and kind of increases. So, that's a resolution at the end of the meeting for us to sign. So, she's been loving the heck out of me, so we make sure we do, we do, and we get that one done so they can finish up the audit because they want to be done by end of, um, this month.
That was for, and outside the, I guess, another thing to come in.
But the additional amendment to the audit, I think it was some additional stuff that had to investigate, no other... Oh, you're talking about next year when we have a new auditor doing?
Yeah, just to the, they said, uh, the, I don't know.
No, but, but that amendment, there's some additional work they did to follow the rules that they had to, oh, and some investigation they were doing. Of course. I think it's written out. I'm not sure if it's written on there or not, but not in detail, but if I can find it and give it to you if we need it.
The county auditor needs it.
Okay.
Yes, the one to the county auditor meeting?
Oh, um, the audit, audit little meeting, okay. I don't even know what to say about that. Can you give us some details from that?
They, they...
They have it every year.
Yes, they, they covered pretty much the race that they're expecting to come in. They're expecting some inflation or a rise in actual property values, which they said it was the largest amount they've seen over the past ten years. They, they also discussed the levy information about individuals who have levies expiring, individuals who are looking to put the levies on. They gave out the timelines that are necessary to make the May ballot as well as the November ballot. And that's pretty much it in this case going on. We did some more information regarding each area, what's it expect based on the village.
And I, I don't know if I even sent you guys a copy of that, so, I mean, just send you a copy of it because there's some critical dates on there if we want to get, um, levies on the ballot for certain things. And if we do want to get it for the May, we're gonna have to start working on like now.
So, the, the paperwork, we have had the dates within the half of the day.
I'll send you that.
They made some significant changes to the way that language is. So, before it would just tell you the amount of village. Now, the ballot actually says the amount that the area is expected to bring in, pardon, like the, versus the seventy, I mean, one hundred fifty village. So, that value is, it's a lot. We're for individuals to see what you're probably bringing, and stuff like that, so.
Make motion to accept fiscal office before they pay the bills.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Okay, next thing is public comments. Can you?
Yep, first up is Ms. Perry.
Uh, good evening, trustees. Mostly what I want to talk about is the house at fifty ninety-one, I live in that move. It's quiet on our street, but they still do drug deals on our street. Um, we still have a problem with their little pets that you have behind, and I think about the snake and the other. Um, recently, I'm staying back, one of our neighbors, a new neighbor, Lieutenant, on the street. In December, she opened up her blinds and windows, and up climbs in the window, one of those little criss. Or should I say bigger ones? She's also, and they also has a dog. And I would like to see somehow something to clean up, so that if somebody walks their dog, they clean it up after it. Because some people won't do. I know, because when I walk mine, I can't do nothing about the water, but the other stuff, I clean it up. I don't want to step in somebody else's dog's day, but then I don't even want to pick it up. It's not my dog, it's not my dog. Then, the other thing is a noise. The thirty-first one we welcomed in twenty twenty-three, some person on Derby was having a good time and went and quit. He scared me, had to come in. Every time he started up, I thought he was finished. He'd start back up again. I thought we were an area with no noise, but this one was having fun at everybody's expense. And if you were thinking you were gonna go to bed early, not until he got finished flying off every bullet in his gun. I thought that was considered illegal. Now, the last thing I want to talk about, uh, the neighborhood on Maplecombe, we have a house that is next door to fifty ninety-one, and they left a junk car and a junk truck. Now, they tried to make the truck start it, but it's still there. The car is not going anywhere, I think it's on blocks, and it's got food in bags, in the car, in the backseat. That if that eventually deteriorates, because it's got holes on it because, like cars out here don't hide. You can tell by a car because it's rusted out and whatever. If they ever get to that car and in that backseat, they don't have fun. And when they get finished having fun, it's mostly on fifty ninety-one and fifty eighty-five on that side. But if for any reason they come down the street and across the street, as I said, there are several people on my street that don't need to see that, wouldn't want to see that, and wouldn't want to be bitten by something like that. That's all I have to say.
Next up, we have Mr. Soder.
Yeah, my name is Timothy Soder. I live at fifty-six fifteen, South Union Road. I'd actually spoke with Eric Walker today on some zoning. I started this zoning situation back in January nineteenth of twenty twenty-one. We're dealing with Justin Ozuski. Or January twenty-two, I'm sorry, January twenty-two. We had a B Z A hearing meeting set, we paid our fee for everything, and then two days before our meeting, which was March seventeenth, we didn't, uh, we was told we no longer work with it, and we were to, uh, deal with Jim McGuire. Who is no longer a trustee either. So, we're just trying to see where we stand. I know I spoke with Eric today on it. We're trying to do kind of a event center, cater to hobby farmers people, do equine stuff, uh, various events. So, if we're on property, we just don't want to have the hassle that we're having, or other township was having with other zoning requests and that nature. So, we're basically just trying to find out why are we gonna left behind for a whole year for when we actually were scheduled for a meeting in March.
Is it a dag now?
Yes. And basically, uh, just trying to, uh, do all the proper procedures before we just throw up a building and start doing whatever we want to do, no complaints. You know, we've got twenty acres of land right there, and we're just trying to do something on one of our parcels. But like I said, nobody had replied. I contacted Jim Barnes through voicemail, no return calls. Eric was the only one to answer today, um, because we were trying to get your meeting last month, and we didn't make it. I think we got our dates misconfused, so, because I know you guys were back and forth with your meetings for a while, and he just actually came back into public meetings in July of last year.
Yeah, it was assumed.
Yeah, it was assumed.
It was a pillhead and stuff.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just trying to get this situated because I don't want to put much money into my land, and then I get complaints and I can't do what I want to do, so.
Want to say you made a few problems?
I talked with Eric today, I talked him about the stuff there, I sent him all the emails that I got from Justin. So, um, I was gonna work more with him, but I wanted everybody to, you know, a year is a long time to wait just to get a simple request.
Well, we apologize for that, and, uh, I'm sure Eric will take it in the floor.
Okay.
Please, hold your seat, Paul.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's your, who's about fifty-six fifteen?
Yes, my head.
Fifty-six fifteen.
South Union.
South Union.
I actually deserve four addresses, so, that's, that's, that we put on our application that we had to fill out.
And you want to make a bit, a bit, so?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we want, we want to do stuff, um, we have several animals now, sheep, donkeys, horse. We want to do other things than that, you know, different benefits, weddings, uh, R B, parking. Get a lot of people that travel around, don't want to sit at R B parks and stuff. We'd like to be able to them to have a nice sunset or sunrise, you know, place the park, see the animals, enjoy, you know, the farm.
That's all the comments for today.
Roll by, if, roll by.
Okay.
He said that was awesome.
Okay. Okay. So, next thing is resolutions for consideration, and, uh, the first resolution twenty-three dash oh oh two. Here's the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees and trustees adopt the following meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. And, uh, look at this, pretty much standard that we've had in years past, gives the dates of the B Z A and zoning.
Right, and I tell you guys, one, the two, the, 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 the wishment, as you did to the year with, along with that, so, we, uh, that also be on the calendar for that. So, the trustee Barnes, um, the Wednesday, he, he requested that, and he, he hasn't changed it, so, I'm gonna pay him, keep him in the way of this.
Make a motion with Dr. Resolution twenty-three dash oh oh two.
A second.
Any questions, votes? Roll call vote, be ready, please, present.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so, the next resolution, uh, twenty-two dash oh oh three, multiple policies.
These policies are the standard ones that you guys pass every year, which include administrative office hours, the holiday schedule, which are the federal holidays based on last year, the payroll schedule for both the bi-weekly and monthly employees, as well as adopting the, I don't think you're gonna adopt the last one though, because I don't know what you guys are gonna break if you're paying it. Low maintenance pool hour, yes? Because you haven't done yours beginning.
Yeah. So, we can allocate because we...
Well, it's just not going to be to these pools.
Do we still delay on all this until next meeting? We start donating life and everything?
You can't hit nothing.
Yeah, let's just do that.
We're just tableing this, yeah?
Okay, so, the next one, resolution twenty-three dash oh oh four, and that one Eric has to be tabled because we have all three trustees, all three trustees of the committee of scientists, and we're not all three here. So, next one, twenty-three dash oh oh five, fire escrow. Jefferson Township Board Trustees hereby authorizes the procedure described in Division C and D of Section thirty-nine twenty-nine point six of the Ohio Rice Code for receiving the cost of remodeling, repairing or securing buildings or other structure damage by fire from insurance companies in certain circumstances. Chief, is this not something we've done every year and has to do with, uh, holding the money and giving the money back to them after the building?
The township holds a portion of the proceeds of the property owner that is satisfied the township to acquire for rebuilding recovery.
Are you okay with this resolution? Make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-three dash oh oh five.
A second.
Any questions or comments?
Is this something I don't remember? Is this something we're doing, uh, now, but we didn't do this last year? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the resolution of the process is not really followed. We've had a couple of fire names, it's up to you, we're handling somebody else, so it's kind of one process that we still know of, all of the same.
Okay, six. It'll be six.
You good, Dave?
Yeah. I don't want to be caught up in the bag.
Can roll call vote, please, this head words is ready.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Take a minute.
Yes.
I don't have that up there.
Okay, next resolution, twenty-three dash zero zero six. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees hereby authorizes an amendment, an amendment to the share of current contract for thirty days. We discussed this in the work session, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the resolution twenty-three dash oh oh six. Roll call vote, be ready for the second.
Trustee Bass? Yes. Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes. Motion carries.
So, this thirty days from today to... From November first to January first. The last contract expired on September third first.
Okay, next resolution, resolution twenty-three dash zero zero seven. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees accepts and authorizes the Ohio Auditor of State Auditor's letter of engagement and amendment letter for auditing services for the audit year of twenty twenty-one. I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero zero seven.
A second.
Roll call vote, be ready for the second.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Bass?
Yes.
Motion carries. The fact that we tabled three and four, I guess you love?
No, my papers are ordered.
Oh, okay, that's personal.
Thanks, whoever put my papers in.
Maybe I've been there. Okay. So... Okay, so, next thing is departmental reports. Kenny, your first wrote.
I'll pass right now.
Yeah, Eric.
I'll pass right now.
Okay. Uh, zoning and code, you have a zoning and code report?
Sure. Uh, a few things for me, uh, February seventh, trustee meetings will, um, do the public care. That will be on the development project for early and early five, uh, depending on where it moves in these next three steps beginning next week. We are working on the township newsletter, getting that out this month on residents. First drive is completely replacing, so, we're hoping to post it for that. Board vacancies, this and that are rotted today, we are looking pretty good on our boards, uh, for our committees, we are getting taken for our property medicines appeals board, as well as code enforcement is already starting to heal off. We're sending out letters, uh, for our properties, I believe we put fifteen in the mail between Friday and, uh, I think that's it for me.
Okay. Next is fire. Captain? Sorry, chief, sorry, sorry.
What's wrong with being a captain?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm the captain?
Actually, we don't define it, sorry.
All right, good evening, everyone, and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Uh, under maintenance, uh, if you have a chance or not, please drive by Station fifty-nine and do doors, uh, front one in the back and three in the front, and very well insulated. We got new, new openers as well, so, thank you very much, uh, for the taxpayer, for, what was it, American Rescue Plan? Is that where the funds came from? Again, thank you very much, taxpayer. Uh, under EMS, we have training tomorrow with Kering Health Network for cold weather emergencies, as Mother Nature tried to kill us last week, year before. Uh, three members of your fire department have been issued paramedic certification from the state of Ohio. Kelly Fagel, Ian Finch, and Ashley Haddam. That is an accomplishment, a year to two years for that class, and, uh, they have, uh, they have excelled. So, they're now in our paramedic orientation program. Uh, let's see here, the twenty twenty-three EMS protocols for the greater mining value has been released, and we will be training and testing shortly. EMS runs, we had a hundred and thirteen for the month of December, thirty-four fire runs. We, uh, provided mutual aid eight times and received it from our neighbors twenty-seven times. Uh, vehicle maintenance, uh, one of our four medics had, uh, the second one had the exact same issue, a fuse control box. But thank heavens, they were both in warranty, so, they were swapped out and operating. Uh, no fire inspections for November, we did have one fire investigation, uh, two members, uh, new members are in orientation. We got two applicant new hires waiting for their background checks to come back. Uh, one EMS public records request, we installed two smoke detectors. Our ventilation fans I told you about last month, uh, that were ordered, were supposed to be in by the end of December. It looks like they're a one to three month delay right now. Again, all this supply chain and getting products from the vendors. Uh, frozen pipes, I cannot emphasize enough that everybody protect your plumbing, protect your homes. The number of calls countywide for flooded structures, busted pipes, and it's horrible when it's on the second floor in the back of the shower, comes through the first floor and all the way to the basement. So, know how to turn your water off if you're on a private well, or whether you're on a municipal supply water. Know where your main shut off is. Uh, if you go away, if I go away for a weekend, I shut the water off to my house. Because I've seen when a toilet blowing off supply pipe, a washer hose breaks, with just a water cover just spraying all in the laundry room, water heaters, the bottom goes out of a water heater, turn your water off. I've had people over the last week tell me, well, we don't want to turn the water off because our pipes will freeze. Your pipes freeze because the temperature is below thirty-two, not the fact that the water's turned off. I mean, just shut off, you don't even have to depressurize it. But more importantly, if it's wanting to be cold like it was for an extended period of time, turn a faucet on, get a stream of water, tap it, tap it, tap it, do you get drip, 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 drip? That little drip will keep your pipes freezing, it'll keep the water flowing. And the little bit more you're gonna pay the water department, it's gonna be well worth it when a, when a pipe breaks in your ceiling, comes down through the ceiling. Uh, last one, I want to emphasize pretty well, every single trustee meeting, if you have an emergency, nine one one. You cannot believe the phone calls are coming to my office. I need an ambulance, my brother's having a heart attack. You don't want to be calling fire headquarters for that, there's nothing I can do for you. Hang up, dial nine one one, but I get them from Trotwood, Dayton, Germantown, and Jefferson. And I really believe what the problem is, is people's talking into these phones, or Google, or Echo, Alexa. I need the fire department, and it gives you my office. And you're really delaying your... And you're really delaying your response. I had a structure fire ten days ago. They called and said their circuit breakers were tripping. I said, where do you live? Drexel. That's not a community, that's an area. Where do you live? Get me the street. I said, that's not even in Jefferson Township. Hang up, call nine one one, they will get all kinds of information from your phone call and get you to help you meet. And when the call is dispatched roughly ten to fifteen minutes later, if their delay wasn't hanging up for me to call nine one one, their house was actually on fire by that time. So again, nine one one. Any questions from trustees? Thank you much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, chief flag. Oh, now get it back here, sorry. Congrats on that.
Thank you, sir. Um, this is a report that covers November one through November thirtieth. Um, overall, crime was sitting at seventy-nine percent above November of twenty twenty-one, plus two hundred and thirty-nine call. Uh, violent crime was, uh, thirty-five percent increase, plus seven, but it's started to trend down over the last two months and has decreased, uh, a hundred percent over September and October. Uh, part one, property crimes increased by ninety, plus sixty-three, and, uh, part two, violent crimes increased by sixty-nine percent, plus fifty-eight, uh, calls. I've been looking, uh, to head through November, a lot of those are starting to trend down. So hopefully it balances back out coming out, out of pandemic shutdown and such. Um, we've got a continual, um, schedule for the speed trailer. It, it continues to be taken out on a daily basis, weather permitting, to, uh, various parts of the township. We covered this last month, but we've had a, uh, a noticeable repeat type call in the Olive Hills complex. We'll cover one of those again here for November, but, uh, we did meet with, uh, DMHA and put together that plan to, uh, issue those trespass notices for all DMHA properties and things will be, uh, picked up by DMHA, so we'll be sharing information back and forth and, um, trying to keep, uh, tabs on some of the subjects that, uh, are causing problems in that, uh, apartment complex. And on November thirteenth, Third Watch crews responded to hit and run crash on West Third. We had a subject on a bicycle that had attempted to cross West Third. It was after dark, so it was low light and was struck by a vehicle. The vehicle then fled. Um, the bicyclist did sustain, uh, serious but non-life threatening injuries. Um, the, uh, vehicle that was used in the, uh, collision was located a short time later in the township, but the driver had fled and we were able to track him down the next day and, uh, we'll be presenting the charges on that. The actual crash, uh, portion of it, uh, the bicyclist will be at fault for, but, uh, the, the hit and run will fall on the driver of the vehicle, so we'll, uh, present charges on both. On November eighteenth, uh, we took into custody the remaining subject from the October robbery in Olive Hills that involved that, uh, PlayStation for sale on Marketplace or something like that. Um, that, that third suspect was located and taken into custody without incident. Um, on November nineteenth, and we responded to a shooting into a habitation in the seventy-one, seventy-four hundred block of Bronson, and it occurred, uh, on the, the previous night. Um, group of individuals that were in the, uh, had gathered in the parking lot basketball, uh, complex area there of the apartments had, uh, dispersed, some shots were fired. Um, one of the complex structures on the corner was hit several times on the side and, uh, the resident there noticed it the next day and called it in. On November twenty-second, we had a B and E in the fifty hundred, fifty-six hundred block of Dayton Liberty, uh, where tools were stolen from a construction site, that new home that was under construction. Um, deputies located a possible suspect vehicle in a driveway here in the township and, uh, made, made contact, attempted to make contact with the, uh, resident there, but prior to, uh, getting to the door, they noticed a truck full of tools. So, um, that time we initiated contact, were able to identify a suspect and, uh, that individual was taken into custody. On November twenty-eighth, Second Watch crews responded to a report of packages being stolen from, uh, porches here in the township. Um, they located a vehicle dri- being driven by a female and, uh, her accomplice boyfriend was, uh, dressed in a United States Postal Service shirt, was getting out in front of addresses where they saw packages, approached the house, stole the package, took off. So, um, both of them were located and charged. Uh, we broke even on traffic crashes in the township over November of last year. We had the same number, so a zero percent increase, decrease. Um, six of those were property damage, four minor injury, and one serious injury, which was the, uh, pedestrian that was struck. Thursday was the busiest day of the month, had three crashes. Uh, failure to maintain reasonable control was the most common causative factor for the crashes, with four of those being attributed to that. Um, State Route four was the most prevalent roadway, it had five crashes, and then the rest were kind of spread out through the township. And we had no illegal dumping complaints received for the month of November. Um, we did have, on New Year's Day, a, a tragic significant crash out here in the township on State Route four. Um, we, uh, we still have an active investigation going on that. Traffic Services, uh, was, was called out to that scene. They are following up on that, uh, investigation. They were still working it, uh, this morning. So, um, we'll, uh, we'll continue through till we get everything answered and taken care of there. Um, we are looking at alcohol as a contributing factor in that crash, and, uh, I'll report more as it unfolds. That's all I have.
Okay, last report, Ms. Grace, Ms. Grace.
I'm, I'm going to be on, they were. I have to leave everybody. Uh, road department of the course, over the last couple of months, we've experienced, uh, a few major breakdowns. We were doing a lead pickup, we ran behind on lead pickup, a couple of weeks, almost three weeks into lead pickup. Uh, we were working on getting, uh, this moved, uh, through the month of December. We did get the lead back, back up and running. We finished out in December with the lead pickup. And then we were doing the move from Dayton Liberty and Union out to the far outs at, um, then, no, Union and Germantown with, uh, Chief Roll Call. Trying to get those buildings switched out, so we can do fully function on the end. Uh, on the lead back, when we did have, we had the bus ready and we had ordered it, it never did tap to get it. And during the process of move, we also, uh, getting our, uh, snow routes together for everybody that was going to be on duty. And you know, as my email guys, when O dot calls, I lose those guys, uh, in snow emergencies. So we are working, uh, me and, uh, the other full-time guy were working together, sometimes we'll switch, uh, EMS to deck bug. And even with this snow emergency that we had, snowstorm we had, realized how bad our equipment, how bad shape our equipment is in. I had three trucks down, one truck was in a shop, and we backed up afterwards, which we were able to go back out and finish cleaning up. We used, uh, another crew to do the rural areas, and we were able to get some of the areas up in, uh, Jefferson Township, uh, the, uh, Blairwood area, all the accent parks, we was able to get some of that done, but we couldn't stay on it because we had lack of equipment. And the lack of maintenance, the lack of cleaning, washing our vehicles off after they get sold on, is a big, big, a big thing. So, uh, during breakdowns, I was given a contact with Chip Geter, and he came out to support the township by doing supply line out in rural areas when we couldn't get out there, to try to make the roads safer. And we did what we could do, just trying to get our vehicles back up and running, even sent a guy to help us get a truck together, but we are hurting for, we are hurting to get these trucks up to par. So I'm implementing some, uh, other things with the crew that need to take place, so we won't have to deal with this anymore. And I'm doing one on ones with my people. Oh, that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. It's a business to have patients with us. I appreciate the patient. We're still working hard on getting the road department fully, fully functional and we can take care of some stuff without doing.
Right, I mean, we, we, we had, it was a busy gang, so we did a lot of videos and such, I think, for storming the campus. Some of the things that I do want to discuss, we have made, we're working constantly, like we can get these videos to residents on, on other platforms, so we now are on YouTube as well, if people don't have Facebook. YouTube is a delay, but we're working on getting that streaming simultaneously, so people can see these things. We base updates on the website as well, to really just highlight things, activities that are either in Jefferson Township or around Jefferson Township, so residents are encouraged, know something happening, send it to us via email, and we will get it up there. It's kind of our digital newsletter. I'm happy, as Mr. Walker stated, we have put down a physical quarterly newsletter that we're trying to get out, we're trying to keep you all in contact, not only what's happening here, but what's happening throughout the township, and any information anyone wants to add for us to put out there, just shoot it to us, so we can make sure people are aware of that. The online one is a little quicker than the paper one, because the paper one is quarterly. So that's that. I will say, myself, Mr. Walker, we attended the item support along Lewis Everly, and as you just heard from Mr. Smith regarding the status of the road equipment, I know you guys have seen the budget that we put out, and the reality is that we have to have serious conversations about putting a budget on that supports that apartment that touches everyone in this apartment, because it is necessary, looking at not only our finances, but the services that are asked of from these individuals to allow people in this township to travel. With that, we have two fire to the app here, which told me earlier, May is the first one and November the second one, but that is a usually a deadline, because really February first is our first time to make sure we get everything done. If we're going to try to not only put this information out, but really talk to residents, hear people's concerns, and make sure that we have things that hopefully the township will pass up and afford to support. Again, not only the equipment in the roads department, staffing in the roads department, and the paving of the roads out throughout the township. So that is a big one that will be coming up for you guys to start discussing and us kind of filing down to papers and get our deadlines to, when we take the first shot of it. I hope we get it. If we don't, we'll be back at it again in November with whatever adjustments we need to make, because that apartment there is very huge to the township. Other than that, as you, we have, we filtered a lot of calls today, and I'm sure there'll be individuals who will want to talk to you guys after this meeting regarding the aggregate as that is expiring, and as we saw in, I believe it came in December, that they have not, they have not locked down rates yet. We're at the township to be able to enter into another one. We are constantly in contact with the, the energy supplier here to figure that out because of the quality of what's going on with energy. It has been, we don't have, we don't have new news for anyone at this point of what's going to happen next, because we are constantly, monthly, we are, no, actually, this weekly, that we are reaching out to the board to discuss where they are with it. They did say, Ed, and if you want to watch, because we did record him here as well, you can hear the information that he gave us, which is the last touch point that we got from the energy aggregate supplier. Once they have a new rate, we will have it back to you guys. I believe next, their next step is that they're going to come to the trustees to approve locking in a range or if they can lock you guys in as a township. But that's all the information we actually have on now. Other than that, I mean, I know a lot of people got A, AES letters stating that it was ending on eleven. There's, there's really nothing more, or information that we have at this time, on now. So I do want to encourage anyone, it's on that meeting, it's on the Facebook page, it's also on the YouTube page, where you can see the individual speak, the information, the live communication that they gave to the trustee board. That is all I have for you guys. If you have anything or any questions, or if you have questions for me, I will go right to it to me.
Okay.
Uh, anyone, is, uh, is the winter gathering on Saturday?
The fourteenth, the fourteenth. For township employees, plus one individual that they elected back. And the township is actually providing catering, because we are in respiratory COVID slash flu season, and we do not want to be carrying, to really show the township's employees that we appreciate the work it does, if they give it to the township. And it will be held at Station fifty-nine?
Sixty. Okay, so next thing. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the trustees' reports, uh, myself, uh, due with, due to family members in medical situations, and I was in communication with Kenny at road departments and, um, other issues, when you had the snow, besides that, I don't have a report.
Um, well, this is my, uh, last year, my very first year, and I just thank you all for, um, electing me, um, to be a trustee, so I just want to let you know a little bit about some of the things that I've done, um, last year. I attended, um, conferences in my, the MVRPC, NHAT, MCTAs, building security meeting, and community town halls. I work with trustees to fill vacant positions by literally meeting with the administrator. I spoke with Commissioner Lederlin and Rice regarding future projects. I work with the fire chiefs to share regarding building, community issues, upgrades, and future goals. Met with fiscal officer to develop fire budgets and review shared contract, networked with other township trustees on grant to other programs and services. Met with representative, both by chair and field plumber regarding township needs and future goals. Assisted back to school, assisted, um, and participated in the back to school giveaway, uh, assisted in the upgrades to the parks. Um, I also onboard meeting, phone conversation with residents to discuss their concerns of business interest in Jefferson. I discussed the aggregation of services with Tri-Cell, assisted in planning and service, served at Employee Appreciation Day. Uh, assisted with community cleanup in various areas. And my twenty twenty-three goals are to continue working with trustees to improve the financial condition of Jefferson Township, to work with trustees to improve roads, fire, share of services in the community, to work with the fiscal officer and others to resolve budgeting issues, continue upgrading policies and procedures, meeting commissioners to develop and identify services and programs, and network with other to improve the overall outlook of finances within our community, and to continue to work with the citizens of Jefferson Township to make this community a we can all be proud of. That's my report.
Thank you. So next thing is the adjournment, ready?
Three and four tables?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I say.
Yes.
Yes.
We will adjourn at seven forty-eight.